Welcome to the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday, August 12th, 6:00 PM. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
John.
Here.
David.
Here.
Report from Town of Hennessy Ad Hoc Agencies.
No.
We haven't met yet.
Okay.
This one, though.
Okay. Consider approval of consent agenda. 3.1, approval of the minutes of the previous month's meetings. 3.2, approval of claims as follows. General Fund, $42,762.84. RSTF, $27,051.93. Library Fund, $270. Previous month's claims, $3,154.51. 3.3, Town Treasurer Report.
It's...I've given you all a copy of it.
Okay.
Got the balances, got the... It should be...I don't think I got a copy of it. Is there any packets?
No, I don't have any.
I don't get no... Thank you. Uh-huh. So, that's what I put in this. You...
Let me go.
So, that's what I put in this. You...
I'm not sure where that is.
Where is that? Okay. Thank you. So, that's what I put in this. You... Okay. I'll go back to 6.
6.1, discussion with possible action to accept a bid from Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion...oh, I did. I missed. Okay, let me back up. I missed Citizens' comments. Sorry. Number 4, Citizens' comments.
Were y'all just bored?
They wanted to look at our pretty faces.
I guess.
Well, we thought y'all was gonna talk about the water bills.
That'll be in the utility.
Okay.
That's the second meeting.
That's what we're here for.
Okay. Okay, I'll go back to 6. 6.1, discussion with possible action to accept a bid from Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of the AMI water system in the amount of $206,235, of which $96,870 will be paid with the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. We've talked about this in the past several times. This will complete the radio system that will actually talk to all the water meters in town, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So... As I say, I know Alyssa knows way more about it than I do, so...
It's raining.
It's clouds.
Sorry.
I make a motion to accept a bid from Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of the AMI water system in the amount of $206,235, of which $96,870 will be paid with the fiscal year '25 REIT grant.
I second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
6.2, discussion with possible action to approve the agreement with Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of the AMI water system as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. I make a motion to approve the agreement with Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of the AMI water systems as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with the...well, that just says "approve." Approved service agreement with Census USA Incorporated for software and technical support for AMI system completion as part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. I make a motion to approve the service agreement with Census USA Incorporated for software and technical support for the AMI system completion as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. I make a motion to approve the service agreement with Census USA Incorporated for software and technical support for the AMI system completion as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
6.2, discussion with possible action to approve the agreement with Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of the AMI water system as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. I make a motion to approve the agreement with Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of the AMI water systems as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with the...well, that just says "approve." Approved service agreement with Census USA Incorporated for software and technical support for AMI system completion as part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. I make a motion to approve the service agreement with Census USA Incorporated for software and technical support for the AMI system completion as a part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
6.4, discussion and possible action concerning the splash pad drainage flooding the softball fields.
All right, that's my deal. Our splash pad, when the wind comes out of the south, floods that north side of the area of swimming softball fields, and it's flooding the outfield of the high school softball field and the little lake field. Anyway, so, there were supposed to be some people here tonight, but we got softball games naturally there, so that's probably more important, the kids are playing. So, anyway, they asked us if we could maybe try to force that water to run off to the west instead of to the east.
So, we spoke to a couple of them. I mean, really, it was actually a pretty simple fix. It was not so much flooding to the north, it was more to the east, is what they were concerned about. What had happened was just those very far east features were turned up way too much, and it was just spraying on the sidewalk going right over. So, we turned it down, and, I mean, we've been watching it, and it's already dried up now, so...
Good. Matter of fact, one of them's been here, he's the one who takes care of the fields. He says that up till last Friday, there was still water sitting in the softball field.
Yep.
And the problem was, when they built that pad and the swimming pool, they didn't haul it, they didn't do the dirt work right to make that field drain, or that stuff drain to the ditch like it was supposed to be. When they moved the dirt in there after they dug out the swimming pool, they put it up to the north end, they hauled it all off, and when they got done hauling it all off, they just back dragged it with their bucket. You know, it wasn't professionally done draining through that way. When they poured that sidewalk on in between there, the grass is taller than the sidewalk, so it runs all that way, so, you know, towards the softball fields. So, all I'm asking, you know, and they're asking, is if somehow we can force the runoff to the west, you know?
Is it still a problem once the pressure was turned down, or...
Not on the east side, no, and that's, I mean, that's kind of what he was saying they were worried about the most, was holding water.
But there's water sitting on that sidewalk right there behind the splash pad, and that concrete is turning black, you know? So, I got pictures of it, if anybody wants to see it, I can make video or take copies of it, whatever. But all we're asking to do is to run that water off.
Some dirt work.
Yeah, and, you know, we got a nice facility over there, you know, it'd be nice to take care of it, you know? There's no reason our sidewalks should be turning black that the water's sitting on, you know? And if we can just force that water to the west, that would be the sin of it, you know? My other problem I have with it is all of our electrical boxes are right there, so when it went blowing out of the south, it's covering our electric boxes in water. You know, and I know they're weatherproof boxes, but, you know, how much, you know, that's weatherproof, not meaning to get hit with water every day and drenching them. You know, we spent a lot of money on that swimming pool and that splash pad. We ought to at least protect our wiring, you know, that, you know, our boxes that control all of that, whether that's put a block up or something to, you know, just to keep the water off the boxes, you know? Or maybe even put a little out shed in it, because the pump and everything's right behind those electric boxes, exposed to the world, PVC pipe, you know? It wouldn't take much for a kid to go by there and step on it or do whatever and break it, you know? If we even put that in, maybe like a storage shed or something, you know, over the top of that, you know, to prevent that, you know, happening or something. But, you know, drain that water to the west and keep it off the fields, I don't, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't know if we can do it in-house, or if we can shoot it, or have somebody come out there and do it. That's all I was gonna have to say, you know, about it, you know? Try to detect what we got going on there, you know, and nobody's trying to, you know? They spent a lot of money on the softball fields, spraying and all that stuff and mowing, and our grass in there is good, too, you know? Sometimes it's, you know, when the wind's blowing, like, we had a lot of rain, there was two or three inches of water sitting in that spot right there, so... And that's what, you know, they're kind of asking, you know, the complaint for. It wasn't nothing, ever anybody doing wrong, just nature taking its course, and we need to fix it.
Can we not get them to sign, before they sign these huge contracts, can we not get a warranty from these companies and say, "If this doesn't work the way you tell us it's gonna work, you have to come back and fix it"?
A lot of that, we got, we get warranties from a lot of them like that.
And bonds.
Yes.
So, how come they don't have to come back and fix?
Because a lot of that, where that was actually at, was not part of the spot that they, that they did, you know, that was all, you know, the splash pad and all that is where they did from that area there, you know? I mean, we did a lot of work, you know, we moved that softball field over this way and, you know, fixed them up there, you know, and, so we prevented, you know, we prevented the water running certain ways. Here's one of the guys who can tell you about the softball field now, you know, about what it's doing to the high school football, uh, softball field. But, you know, I'm just, like I said, I'm just asking, can we move, try to force the water that way, and, you know, like our electric boxes, try to take care of them, you know, so, you know, the damage, you know, maybe we can prevent it a little bit, you know? Take care of what we got, you know, I guess that's it, you know? Tyson, you got anything to say on that?
As far as the water?
Yeah.
Uh, it's just a pain in the butt, it's a mess, bees, ton of bees, on the concrete, the black, I'm sure that a kid's gonna slip and fall on that nasty slimy mess. But just the softball field in general, left field corner is a swampy mess even still today, shutting the sprinklers off for three days, and it's still wet, you know? Basically, the splash pad, you can see it where it's at. I just need some way to stop it. Drains, I don't, I don't know.
Is it a drainage issue?
Yeah.
Maybe we could come in, maybe kind of come in and look at it, see if we can get the water to go one way, if it would help.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's set right there, you know, and the sidewalks are lower than the dirt in a way, and it just forces the runoff up there.
Maybe we can meet sometime and look at it and...
As I say, yeah.
I don't think that gutter off only bathrooms helping much either, looking at it, it's kind of washed out right there, and I think it's sending it right there to the left field corner, too, looking at it today messing with it, I think that's probably part of the problem, too.
You're talking about the concession stand?
Yeah. The women's got the bathroom where the drills are changing, yeah.
I think that's the schools.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I bet it could be piped a different route if it's just coming off the guttering.
Yeah. I think that's some of it, but that's, I mean, that's not the main problem.
Right.
Splash, you know, getting some water off would help, yes, but any other would help.
I mean, our biggest, the biggest one, the biggest problem, when, over on the north side, when there's five jets shooting up straight up in the air, 10, 15 feet, and that one, well, there's got the little circuitry deal that shoots another 10 feet on top of it.
Yeah, that's, that's what we went and turned down. So, that's what we went and turned down with those, and, I mean, it looked, it's definitely drier today, I mean, I...
Yeah. Because I went over there early in the mornings, and, you know, I went over there to walk my dog and all that stuff, and I turned him on, and one day it was real windy, and the water was shooting up there almost halfway to the bathrooms, you know, and so, and the wind was probably blowing about 15...
Was that before she turned them down, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, if it's real windy, it's...
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to do, and that's why...
It's gonna make a difference.
And that's why, I mean, I started looking at that water set right there, you know, that sidewalk slugs down at that end, and it just sits right there underneath that tree and where the picnic tables are at.
You can see the tire ruts from the no joke from the other day where, how wet it was.
So, we just need some drainage in between the splash pad and the softball field to try to run to the ditch on Mitchell, is basically what we're wanting to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Alyssa, if you don't mind, take a look at that, and Mike, appreciate your help. Sure.
Awesome, then you gotta get back to softball games, we'll let you get out of here.
It's raining out there, I don't think it's raining.
Okay.
Number 7, new business. Any matter not known which could not be reasonably foreseen prior the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311/9 Title 25OS. Councilperson's report. Harold?
I don't have any.
Bert?
Nope.
John?
No.
David?
Yeah, Randy, just one minor. Back up on the...I don't want to rediscuss 6.4, but I want to mention that we didn't take an action on that. Do we want to table this for our next meeting? I think that would be what we need to do.
Okay.
Because I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we just table 6.4, and then Alyssa can address it again in 30 days. What do you guys think about that, huh?
Come up with a plan and see if we can figure out a solution.
That's all I got, Randy.
Yep, that'll work. You good for that, Sheldon?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I don't have anything, so... Number 9, move to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Was that Bert? Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said she had that.
I think she said by Friday.
By Friday, she'll have us one.
Oh, so now we're done here? Back in the chair, so we'll look up.
Okay. I want to make sure you guys are ready.
Just a second.
No, I know she's learning, so...
Oops, we can fix it, it's fine. All right. Number 10, that's me. Sorry, I don't have... All right. Mary Ann, this one. All right. All right.
Okay. Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, regular meeting, Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, Council Room, at 6:00 PM. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
John?
Here.
David?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda. 2.1, minutes from previous month's meeting. 2.2, approval of claims of follow, approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, $112,897.25. Previous month's Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, $633.66. Accept bid from Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of AMI water system in the amount of $206,235, of which $96,870 will be paid with the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. Approval of agreement, approval of agreement with Utility Technology Services Incorporated for completion of AMI water system as part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant. Approval of service agreement with Census USA Incorporated for software and technical support for AMI system completion as part of the fiscal year '25 REIT grant.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay. Number 3, other scheduled business. 3.1, discussion with possible action concerning water and sewer billing issue for Ms. Kay Bullis and Mr. Austin Whitburn.
This is, uh, this is my item, Randy.
Okay.
I'll just talk briefly for a couple of minutes here, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, for discussion amongst you guys, and I think Ms. Bullis and Mr. Whitburn want to address the board. At our last meeting, Ms. Bullis challenged all five of us board members, I can't, I can't reword it exactly like she worded it, but I'm sure she's gonna give us a review here in just a minute. She challenged us to take actions on our water billing issues, and I'll leave it at I did meet with her and went in depth on all of the separate portions of her complaint, and I think we need to listen to her this evening very carefully. That's all I'll say for now.
David, I got a question, because I wasn't here last month.
Yeah.
After meeting with her, are you convinced that that water did not go through her meter?
I am not convinced.
And I know the town made a mistake.
However, I think we need to wring this thing out, top to bottom, based on the, let me back up on that. I think we need to go in depth into the problem based on a lot of the water problems that we've had in the past. That's what is my concern, is water billing issues that we've had in the past, and then now we have, we have some more, okay? So, for some reason, we haven't completely snuffed out the water billing issues that we've had in the past, and I think we need to do a, an in-depth root cause analysis to figure this out.
Okay.
I have several questions myself, but I wanted to let Ms. Bullis talk.
When we, I do know, when we get this new equipment in that we have approved tonight, the staff in Town Hall can look at the computer every morning, and if anybody has used above the, their normal average, it will give them a reading on that, so they can call them and say, "Hey, you might have a leak."
Yeah.
You know, before a month goes by.
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's absolutely gonna be...
So, I think that will resolve that, and I do know, on the, on the bill south of town, and I think you were told that right, Kelly, that there was a mistake in the meter?
Yeah.
And the town corrected it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, anyway, again, and I'll shut up here in just a second, my concern is our historical issues bounced up against the ones we have now, and we've, somehow, we've got to get to the bottom of what's going on with these meters, figure it out, and come up with a corrective action plan. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bullis, with your permission, Randy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, so I want to update you on what's happened since I was here last time. I did, what happened was a week went by, nothing happened, and then I got a cutoff notice that if I didn't pay the $1,100 bill, my water was gonna be cut off. I kind of thought maybe it had been taken care of, and so then I called, well, I got that on Friday, and of course, I posted it on Facebook, and got a call that night from, from another town, that this person said, "Hey, Kelly," he said, "we, we use these meters." And he said, "These meters are not accurate all the time." He said, "This happens all the time in our town," and he's, I said, "What do you do about it?" He goes, "We just adjust it back to their average." He said, "We know that these people aren't using, you know, all of a sudden, they're using, at 2 o'clock in the morning, 267 gallons." He said, "We, we know that," and it's, you know, where it's just round the clock, where it's just abnormal use, and he said, "He said, 'These meters are not accurate.'" He said, "We have these same exact meters." He said, "You just need to go tell them that, you know, that you, that they're not, it's, there's no way to use this water." And I said, "Well, I've been there. I've been there, done that," and I said, "That's why, that's why I went to Facebook." So, he said, "He said, 'I'm telling you,'" he said, "I've had these meters for a while," and he said, "He said, 'Sometimes they even run backwards.'" He said, "They're not accurate." So, he said, "Not, he said, 'Not all of them,' but he said, 'We do use these meters,' and, and he said, 'Their accuracy is, you know, he said, 'We do have, on occasion, we do have some.'" I said, "What do you do with the citizens?" He said, "We don't disrupt the citizens by sending them an $1,100 bill." He said, "We look at it, we go, 'There's no way. There'd be water in the street, somebody would've noticed.'" So, he goes, "We just adjust it back." So, I did, so, after that, I called Tiffany, and I came in, and I was like, "What about this bill? Like, it hasn't been addressed." She said, "She was gonna meet with Alyssa that day, that afternoon, she said, 'I'll get back to you.'" So, that was on a Monday. She called me on Friday, on a Friday. She said, "This is what we did." She said, "That meter number wasn't even the same meter number," and I said, "That's what I had addressed." She said, "What we did was we changed it out, we put a new one in." She said, "I did adjust your bill back," and she said, "I even went back as far as March, she said, 'I saw that there, it looked like there was a little bit over usage in March that wasn't normal, so I, you've got a $36 credit on your account.'" I thanked her for that, and I said, "Well, are we gonna address the, the other issue that I had two months ago where I was charged five times the amount?" And I said, "We don't have any tenants there." Like, there's no, there's no usage there. I mean, it's an occasional toilet flush from one of the guys that happens to walk in, but we don't, we don't have any, we don't have any tenants there." And I said, and she said, "Well, she would look into it," but I have heard nothing. I've tried calling today, and she's out, so I've gotten no, no, nothing's been addressed on that, and I asked her to look into the 409 Center. This was last year, when I had two tenants that were there very extremely part-time. I was there part-time. I was charged 560-some dollars one month, charged 600-and-some dollars the next month, and I was told every time I came in, "Oh, you've got a water leak, you've got a water leak." I never had a plumber show up. I had them come out and change the meter, they sent it off for a field test, blah, 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 blah. You know, sent it off to, not a field test, they sent it off for a, what do you all call it?
To check the accuracy of the meter.
Yeah. So, and they came back and said, "No, there was nothing wrong with it." Now, I've got all these tenants that I have, I haven't had any problems. I have no problems with it. There clearly was, clearly, there was something wrong with the meter those two particular months. There's no way that there was, that I was using 200 to, you know, anywhere from 150 to 200 gallons an hour at that place, there's no way. I did not have a water leak. So, that's not been, that has not been addressed, but I, I would appreciate it if that was looked into, if that was addressed, because there's, there's no way. And I'm not the only one. Y'all, I've, I can't tell you the phone calls I've gotten from your citizens that have had same issues, and they're treated the same way. Their story is the same way. They walk in, "You've got a water leak, you've got a toilet running." You know, all of a sudden, we have plumbing experts telling these residents that they have all these issues when they don't. They go in, you know, hire a plumber to come in and check things out, and they're like, "There's nothing wrong. Nothing, we don't see anything wrong." So...
Alyssa, have you all done, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but have you all done a
And they're treated the same way. Their story is the same way. They walk in, you, you've got a water leak. You've got a toilet running. You know, all of a sudden, uh, we have plumbing experts telling these residents that they have all these issues when they don't. They go in, you know, hire a plumber to come in and check things out, and they're like, there's nothing wrong. Nothing, we don't see anything wrong. So.
Alyssa, have you all done, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but have you all done a field test on those meters? Just on the 409 center?
Not recently.
But, back when she had the.
I have field, I have field tests, yes, and it showed. All of a sudden, at 2:00 in the morning, all of a sudden, it's running 167 gallons an hour. Okay? And it's running over 160 gallons an hour until all of a sudden, at, uh, 7:00 in the morning, nobody's there. It quits. If I've got a water leak, it should be consistent. It should run constantly the whole time. But it, it breaks up, and it stops, and starts, and stops, and starts. But then, here at 1061 South Main, uh, well, now three months ago, where I had a $250 bill, normally it runs $50, they couldn't even provide a field test that proved that, that water was used. Cause they said I asked for the field test too late. But yet, I've gotta pay the $250 or they're gonna shut it off. So I paid it, but it's like, I feel like the citizens are held hostage because there's no, there, there's no cooperation. There's no reasoning. You know, last year, I, I called Harold. I'm like, I'm calling the mayor. Fine, call the mayor. Well, they say that because the mayor is a sitting duck. Sorry, Harold, but I'm gonna tell ya, the mayor's position is a joke. This city has adopted a government that not only has.
In 1898.
It's, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. We need to come up to the times. The people of the town need to elect a mayor, not just go, well, you know what, it's your turn. And not only that, but you've got, that's the administrator that you guys have given all the authority to. This person, she, you know, I was told by, by Harold, Kelly, I can't do anything about your bill. There's not one thing I could do about your bill. He said, she has all the authority. I said, you can't go in there, and he goes, I can do nothing. He said, all that authority was taken away from the mayor a few years ago.
Let me interject something.
Sure.
Do y'all really want the type of community where one town board member can go in and say, them, and them, and them gets their water bill lowered to minimum?
Right now, we have one person who has all the authority in the world.
This board can lower your bill.
How, how come it hasn't been done? How come I had to come here last, last month and do what I had to do and bring it to your attention? And still, it did not get done until I went in after I got a cutoff notice, and I had to go call Tiffany out.
But the, but the town corrected its mistake, Brad.
But the town didn't correct it last year.
I don't think there was a mistake.
I went to the mayor. I went to the mayor.
Honestly, don't. I think that water went through that meter.
It did not go through that meter.
Okay. Well, the board has the authority to adjust those bills. No one person, Tiffany can't do it. She's right.
Did you give Tiffany the authority to adjust my bill?
No.
Then why did she do it?
Because she found an error, because it was a mistake.
So that means she didn't need your authority. That means she can't adjust it.
But she can't without finding an error. That has to go before the board.
The error came before the board?
No.
You, you all just had a discussion about it?
No.
Well, this is what I have to say.
So if they find an error out in the field, they can correct that?
Tell, all right, tell me how they can prove, how can they prove that water actually ran through that meter? Can you actually prove? Can you prove that?
No.
No?
No more than you can prove that it didn't.
That's exactly right. So why can't you go back and go, you know what? There's, there's not been, there, this is not normal usage. This isn't normal.
Well, Kelly.
Trust me, if I was running that much water through that building, y'all would've seen it on the street. And if I had a leak, that, if you haven't been to my parking lot, there are, there are cracks all through that parking lot. You would've seen the water running everywhere.
You can convince, or try to convince the board to adjust your bill. That's, the board can do that. I am not in favor of that because I've been down this road before, and next month, we'll have 50 people.
Well, you know what? That's because you need to address the problem with the meters.
No, because people are watering their lawns, and they're gonna come in saying, I'm opposed to.
I wasn't watering the lawn.
I understand.
I was, I was running no water.
No, I understand you weren't, but I'm saying people who do.
Okay, you understand that I wasn't, but you will not adjust my bill. You just said it. You understood.
I understand you're not watering the lawn up there. I, I agree, but I'm just saying, everybody in the summer gets a higher bill. I'm getting higher bills than normal.
I haven't. I have not gotten a higher bill all summer long.
Okay.
Until the $250 at 1061 South Main, and then the $1,100 bill at 1341 South Main.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not gonna argue with you. I, there's four other people on the board.
Well, I'll tell you what. This is what, this is what, I'm just gonna announce it right here. On August 20th, we're gonna have a city, a town hall, a town hall meeting right across the street. And I invite you all, I invite all the citizens that have, who have had problems, cause I know there's many. Because we've got issues in this town. I don't know if you remember the audit that still hasn't been, that still hasn't been presented.
I wish you'd call the state auditor and ask why.
Trust me, I am.
Good. Ask them.
I'm not only stopping at the state auditor.
Okay.
But we've got issues in this town, and this form of government does not work. It is time to come up with the times. We can't, we have, and we've got an issue of control is what we've got. We've got one person that has control.
And that's the way, we are statutory town form of government.
Exactly.
And that cannot be changed without a vote of the people.
Exactly. All the reason for the town hall next week.
I would love to see it changed. I'd love to go from being a town to a city. I, I think we'd get more business opportunities. We'd get, we would get more grants. But because we're a town form of government, that indicates small, and businesses don't particularly wanna make.
I think that you all need to be for the citizens, which also interprets into the businesses. Because the citizens are the ones who put little businesses in town. And it's support local. And I don't see where we get any support. Now, I'm not the only one. I've got several people here that would like to address you all and express their issues. Cause I'm not the only one. I'm just the one with the mouth that's gonna come up and say it.
So I will say, with, with us upgrading this system, rather than getting one number every month, we're now gonna get multiple numbers. We're gonna have more data. We're gonna be able to see more of this. And hopefully, that will help eliminate some of these issues. So hopefully, these upgrades will help. Now, I did not know of the issue last year. I guess I, I don't know, was it brought to a meeting? Maybe I wasn't here, but.
I didn't bring it to, I didn't bring it to the meeting, cause I honestly thought I was getting somewhere, like, I'll just go to the mayor. I'll just bypass the city employees. I'll just go to the mayor.
Understand.
And find out, I can't do anything.
Understand. So I, I understand you're frustrated, and, um, I'm hoping that the more data that we can get will help alleviate these issues, because we can see and it will flag it and say, hey, this is a problem, rather than us finding it 30 days later. And being, we can be a little bit more reactive, or a little more proactive rather than reactive. So hopefully, this will help us. If not, we've gotta figure out a system to where we can be more proactive rather than reactive.
Well, then, Tiff, all right, tell me this. 1061 South Main.
Okay.
There's no proof, there's no proof that any water ran through, I, I don't even know if a field test proved that I ran that much water through. There's none. Yet, gotta pay your bill or we're shutting, we're shutting it off. That, that's just holding your citizens hostage.
A few years back, I rent a storage building, and I pay a minimum electric bill. 30, at that time, was $32 a month. In one month, I got a bill for $1,800. I hired an electrician to come in, go over the building. He found nothing. How much of that you think I got O G and E to take off?
And you know what, Bert? That's the difference. That's O G and E. That's big time O G and E. We are little town Tennessee. We are not big city, big state. We're not anything big like that.
So we should just pick and choose.
You need to take care of your citizens.
We should just pick and choose who's gonna pay what?
Well, that's what you do.
Regardless of the meter?
Yeah, that's what you do, because I'm gonna tell you what. One of my tenants told me, she said, man, you really pulled something off at the meeting, because the next day, she got a refund check in the mail from the city for, for overage on her water. I said, did you complain? Did you? She goes, I didn't say anything.
Cause I think, correct me if I'm wrong, there were seven errors where the meter numbers have been interchanged. Is that correct?
I think it was close to seven.
So the town found the problem and corrected it.
For $27, but you don't help anybody who has a 600, an outrageous bill? Come on, Bert.
What do you inspect?
Who the hell runs water at 2:00 in the morning?
Toilets.
For 167, 167 gallons? Come on.
Sure.
All night long.
Absolutely.
When you inspect these meters, do you do it yourself, or do you have somebody outside do it?
I mean, as far as a field test, we can do it. When we send it off for accuracy.
Do you think it'd be a good idea to have somebody outside do it from now on, maybe to have a?
I mean, I know we have. We have for the 409 center. It came back, you know, 99% accurate.
Mike, let me expand on your question if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
I actually was sitting here waiting to get a word in to talk to you about this very topic. When, when you pull, I, I understand the difference between a field test, I've had one at my house. I know what that is. And, and now, now you've mentioned the word accuracy, accuracy, accuracy test, and I know what that is, actually. So my question is, when you pull a meter for an accuracy test and you send it off to be tested, where do you send it?
M.E. Simpson.
Who is that?
I can show you there on Google. That's just.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
M.E.
Say it again, M.E.
M.E. Simpson.
Is it, that's a certified lab?
Yeah.
S.I.M.P.
S.O.N.
S.O.N., certified lab.
And that's the only thing I was referring to, is maybe an outside, maybe it might be a solution.
It's a, it's a third party versus, what I was worried about was, was we sending those meters back in to the contractor that furnished them?
No.
That's what I wanted to verify tonight, for sure, for me. Thank you.
Well, I will say this. Tiffany said that she was calling other cities to find out how they handled their, how, how do they handle their situations that are like this? I haven't heard anything.
And that, and that is ongoing, correct?
Yeah.
She told me that she and Alyssa were working on that to get input from other communities so that we can develop a policy on, on how to handle things like that.
One question I got, where are we at on the state statutes as far as, uh, you know, staying within the, like, testing the meters? You know, the state statute says we ain't supposed to charge to have them tested in a 12-month period. You know, uh, we ain't supposed to charge for that. And the consumer's supposed to be there, uh, has the right to be there when they're tested. Now, if you call a field test, what do you call a field test?
I mean, that's when we take the machine out there. We go back 35 days and see it hour by hour.
And that's how she gets the reading that sends off to the people?
Yeah.
But nobody's, uh, do you ask the consumer to be there when they do it? And do we charge for that?
No, we don't charge for that.
So what's the 79 bucks that we charge them to?
That's if we send it off to a third party.
Okay, well, that is actually against the law. Y'all need to check your state statutes. That's against the law to charge the citizen to send it off to be tested, number one. Number two, it's also in the state statutes that, that you are not, that if a bill comes back over 3% higher than normal, that you are to immediately adjust it. Check that out in your state statutes.
Do you know what state statute that's in?
I'll look that up.
Okay.
But I saw it. I read it.
It's 165, Bert. Oklahoma Administrative Code. Oklahoma Administrative Code 165.
We would definitely need to have Jared look into that.
Yeah, we need to have Jared look into that, and if we're not doing something correctly, we need to fix, um, whatever, um, you know, town ordinance or whatever to make sure that we're compliant.
I, and I do know when, I don't know about the meter thing, but I do know when I had the high of G and E bill, I asked them to send it in, and they were gonna charge me, I, I wanna say it was $200 or $300.
This is it. This is, this pertains, this particular statute pertains to utility bills, water, water utility bills.
Okay.
I saw the same thing prepping for this meeting, Bert.
Okay.
Exactly what Kelly stated.
So if we can't bill anybody more than 3%, uh, Austin's car wash is gonna use way more money this time of year than it is in December, right?
Actually, it's, it's the opposite. I, I have more business and even more water than what I'm.
Okay. But I'm just using that as an example, but bills are gonna fluctuate more than 3%, good grief.
But I think it's over to the usage, abnormal usage. You know, once they determine the, uh.
I mean, I'm not, it may be a state, and if it is, we need to.
But that's just what I'm saying. I have been there, I've been at that 409 center, working on it, painting and using lots of water. Never have I had, ever had a bill for $500 until.
I understand that.
Till those two months.
Did you have, cause I'm not totally familiar, did you have $500 each month for two months?
Yeah. One was like $580-some dollars, the next one was 600, and it was over $1,200 in bills in two months. And my normal bill ran $140. It consistently, even with, I have got the donut shop in there. I've got Candy Snyder in there.
Right.
I, I've got other people in there, and I'm in there more often. There's more people flushing toilets. There's more water being used.
Well, I'm sure, yeah.
So you can't tell me that I ran through $1,000 worth of water in two months. There's no way. There's no way.
Kelly, I need clarification from you on, on something you said at, at the very beginning of, when you started talking. You, you were talking about, you posted some stuff on Facebook, and then you got a phone call from a, a person from another town. Just for me, for my clarification, that person worked in that town's water department. Is that correct? Okay, and that person actually told you that that town has the exact same meters from the exact same contractor?
He has, he has the same, the same meters. They're the same kind of meters, same exact kind.
Same make and model?
Same, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, okay, I wanted to clarify that because, I, I wanted to make sure I understood that. And, uh, another thing that I wanted to clarify is, so tonight, you're actually seeking reimbursement for a $500 water bill, a $600 water bill, and a $250 water bill?
Right.
Okay. Uh, I've already got my accuracy test thing going. Uh, did you have anything else to add?
I just want to clarify that, you know, just a couple of months ago, you guys are all on, you know, well, the field test showed this and that and the other. They had no proof with a field test that I, that we used $250 worth of water, yet I still had to pay it. Or I was, or I was gonna be shut off. How fair is that? You, you all, y'all can't even prove it, but you're gonna be like, well, we're just, we're just gonna shut it off. How is that taking care of your citizens? All, all that, all that is, is greed. That is just, that is greed from the city.
I disagree. It's not greed. It is a matter of, we have people get shut off every month because they don't pay the bill. And some of them are high bills. And I've known people who have had toilets run and used their $400 a month.
You can't prove that my toilets were running.
I understand that, and that's the problem. O G and E couldn't prove that, that electricity went through my meter.
This is, this is the whole problem. This is the whole problem, is that you all, whatever you say, is what, is what goes.
Well, it's not what.
The citizens have no voice. That's the problem.
It's not what we say, it's what goes through our meters.
Bert, I have heard people, front, citizens, that have told me, they said, Kelly, we called a plumber out. They checked everything. I don't ha, I don't have any plumbing issues. I said, what did the city do? Nothing. They told me I had to pay it.
I understand. I, and I, I, and I sympathize. I understand completely. It's, uh, but it.
You can sympathize, but you really don't care.
No, I really do care.
Well, I don't think so.
Cause I've been in your shoes, trust me. And even with a water bill, and I, and I had to pay it. I mean, there was just no.
I, I don't, I don't know how y'all sleep at night. I do not know how you sleep at night knowing that this is going on.
I have two questions. Does anybody else have an opinion besides Bert? My second question is, with this new system that's coming in, is the staff gonna call us if they see that it's been fluctuating higher than normal? Are we gonna get a phone call? Are we gonna get a text? Are we gonna get an email? How will the citizens be notified?
I don't know that we've decided necessarily on a system, but I, I hope that, that's what, that's what I'm hoping happens. I'm hoping that that'll flag it. We can see the issue. If we start to see something or question it, then we can address it two days down the road, rather than 60 days down the road. You know, we, we can, if we feel like something's going on, we can address the issue now, rather than after the $500 bill, the $400 bill, whatever that is. So. So, that's, that's my thought process on that, I would like to see that. The way it was described to me is it will run a report and we can see those variances, and I feel like those need to be addressed, and yes, I hope that, you know, I hope that there's not very many on there, but we can make those phone calls and say, hey, was something going on different? You know, we can be a little bit more proactive in this situation.
Will you have a policy that citizen has to be notified within twenty-four, forty-eight, or seventy-two hours?
At this point, we don't have anything, but that is something definitely we can look into doing. I'm only one vote, so.
I would be totally in favor of that.
Absolutely, I mean, that's something we'll have to get with Jared and draw up.
Because it would eliminate these kinds of issues, if, if somebody got a phone call that said, hey, your meter flagged that you used X amount of gallons yesterday, it doesn't go on a month where you run up a five hundred dollar bill.
Who's gonna sit there and go through all that data?
Well, that data will, it'll go into, it'll do it itself.
And give us a printout.
Well, someone's gonna read the monitor, or read the paper.
And hopefully it'll summarize that and send us an email, that's something that we've got to get with them, so, I mean, in my, my personal job, I work in measurement, I measure natural gas, and I go through tons and tons and tons of this data. So, we have programs that will say, this, there's something going on with this, either it be a communication issue or something like that, so, the more data you have, the better off you're gonna be. You know, it's, it's, as technology's evolved, you know, I feel like these water meters are behind the time as far as this, but with water, there's not nearly as much money in it as there is oil and gas. So, the accuracy of them, or, or the town doesn't have the money that these big old companies have, so, but, the more data we can get, the more accurate we can be, the better we can be, the more proactive we can be, so I feel like we're taking a step, and I know this doesn't alleviate your frustrations right now, I understand that, but I'm hoping we can take a step towards fixing this problem, we don't have these issues going forward, but it's taken time, and REAP grants, and other things for us to get that money in order for us to do this, so, I mean, I understand you guys are frustrated, and if they're not accurate, I hope we can do what we can, find mistakes if there are any, and correct them. I personally don't want anybody's water bill to be more than what it actually is. I don't want my water bill to be any more than what it actually is, and I don't wish that upon anybody else.
Nor do I.
But I.
Think, you think that I do?
I, I don't, 'cause I, I mean, I don't gain anything from it as far as that goes, and I, I just, I want it to be right, it's the same way at work, and, and, you know, we've had producers say, well, you guys are stealing gas, well, no, we're not. I have a balance, just like everybody else has a balance, we've gotta figure this out. So, I mean, the technology's getting better, and I'm hoping that more data is going to fix this issue. And hopefully these reports will fix this issue, and once we get this system in place, we can kinda see what the capabilities are of this, then we can introduce that seventy-two, forty-eight, whatever is feasible, that we can contact citizens and say, hey, we think you may have an issue, we can look at this before it becomes a bigger issue like it has with the thirty, sixty days, whatever it ends up being. So, I think, I think this is a step in the right direction, I hope, and, um, and hopefully, you know, you guys, you guys aren't in here upset, you know.
Well, I've been on the speaking, but I've got someone here that would like to speak also, on the same issue.
Absolutely.
Well, I think there's more than just me.
Right, I mean.
I understand.
I, I don't have a problem starting, I'm here tonight because of a water reading that has set off alarms, not in my home, but in the city administrator's office. According to her, the numbers can only mean one of two things, I have a water leak or some sort of mysterious flooding disaster. Let's review the facts. In February, my previous read was seventy-one thousand five hundred and four, and the current read was one hundred and five thousand and fifty gallons for February twenty-first through March seventeenth of twenty twenty-five. That's thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six gallons of water usage on a vacant house. Vacant house, there's nobody there, there's no lawns being watered, there's no bath, there's no one even flushing a toilet in this house. This would make sense if I was running a backyard water park twenty-four seven. Here's the catch, there is no leak. I have checked, double-checked, and confirmed that there was not so much as even a dripping faucet. My husband is a plumber, I would know. And here's what's more interesting, according to the meter, the usage spike continued all day and all night, get this, from four oh six P.M. on February twenty-second through four oh six A.M. on March sixth. After that, the usage went right back to the normal readings. The odds of this happening naturally are slim to none, but the odds of a faulty meter logging phantom usage seem to be the likely cause. For perspective, the average household of two people uses about three thousand gallons a month, a family obviously more. My bill was for thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six gallons of water on a vacant house. So according to the meter, I managed to use more than eleven times the amount of water that two people would use to run a household in thirteen days, without a single sign of excess water flow anywhere on my property. Of course, the idea that the meter, a device already known for producing false readings, could be wrong, is apparently unthinkable. Instead of the narrative, instead, the narrative seems to be that I must be guilty of some unseen, constant water-wasting crime. And frankly, the way this is approached makes the meter feel like the water department is guarding its own personal bank account, rather than billing residents fairly. If these meters were truly flawless, we wouldn't be standing here having this conversation, yet here we are. I'm asking the board to acknowledge the ongoing concerns about the meter's reliability, investigate the phantom usage, and to stop presuming the residents are at fault without solid proof. Accuracy should come before accusation. I have two bills here, my average bill for that house when I had a resident was ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents, it was a single elderly lady in her eighties. I have a two hundred and ninety-seven dollar bill for this period, February through March, and I would like to request a two hundred dollar refund. I also took my concerns to Mr. Harold, Mr. Shaw, after I was told by Tiffany, there's nothing I can do, you just have to pay the bill. That's not fair. She always said, I didn't know the house was vacant. It's none of your business if my house is vacant, the problem is, there's a serious issue with this meter. At four oh six P.M. on the twenty-second to four oh six A.M. on the sixth, don't you think that's a coincidence? Thank you for your time.
Was there a field test done on this meter, or?
I've never heard of that.
Okay.
There was.
Okay.
Three hundred thousand, three hundred gallons of water going through at two o'clock in the morning, two hundred and some gallons going through at two, four o'clock, it, it's ridiculous, would you like to see what I have?
No, I was just telling Randy that's what you've got, I think, on the field test.
Oh, okay.
Where it started, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
And ended it for us, and that doesn't make sense.
Do we have a rep for the manufacturer of this meter, and can we get them at a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause, I mean, I think, I think getting them to answer some questions is, you know, you guys are upset with the manufacturer, and they sold us a product that they told us was accurate, so, I feel like.
With the way that the people in the city office handle the situation, because it's like, nothing I can do, you're just gonna have to pay the bill. It, that's ridiculous.
I think we need to be asking, uh, uh, our, uh, our meter, I don't know, would, would we call them a contractor? Are we, are they contracted, or do we have a service agreement with them, or what?
Yeah, I believe we have, I believe we have a service agreement.
Okay, well, back to the warranty question that was asked earlier in the meeting. We need to start trying to find out if there's any warranty on, on these meters. That's my personal opinion, I'm not directing that.
Well, it sounds like they definitely got some man, uh, some, we've got a lot of questions that they need to be the ones answering, because I can't answer that for the manufacturer, this is, they came in and sold us these meters.
Randy, I wanna ask Kelly a question, and then I, I wanted to get, uh, Austin is here also to talk, and I think there may be some more people that wanna talk. Kelly, a question I have for you is, you know, we talked a few minutes ago about getting our attorney to review, uh, uh, OAC one sixty-five and ensure that we're compliant in, in, on that document, uh, we need some time on that. Would you be willing to, uh, let me keep this item, uh, on our agenda, but table it for next month's meeting, would you, would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I'd also like to see if we could have the rep, sorry to interrupt you, but if we can have the rep here next meeting as well.
Yeah, I was gonna follow up with that, Randy.
I would, I would sure like to, uh, them to answer some of these questions for us as well.
Get the meter folks in here, uh.
I would also like to put on the agenda for us to look into developing a policy on just, instances just like this.
A better way of handling, rather than them coming in and saying, well, you have to pay it, maybe we have a better process.
I'm, I'm not trying to argue with anybody, I, and I wish our attorney was here, because when, when we start doing something like writing down a bill for one citizen that we don't do for everybody, then we get ourselves in a bind. So I, I, I wish the attorney was here, and again, Kelly, if we could address that again next month, uh, Shelley, do you have any idea why he wasn't here tonight?
I'm not hurt on Jared, sorry.
This was scheduled when we made our, when we made our schedule last year, this was one of the dates, I think he's on vacation.
Oh, okay.
He had something circled, he wasn't gonna be here this date, so.
Who else wants to speak on water? Austin, I'm, I, I was trying to get to you, and if nobody else wants to speak, I wanted to give the floor to Austin, Randy, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Austin, you got it, better rep.
Well, I've, I've had some issues the, the past year, year and a half, uh, with, with water usage and sewage usage. My house where I currently live has been completely replumbed, completely remodeled, I'm talking, top to bottom, electrical, plumbing, everything. Haven't really had any issues out of my water bill at the house until here, the, the past three or four or five months. Um, and then all of a sudden it jumped up from a, a normal sixty-five dollar or so a month bill to two or three hundred dollars a month at that same time. Across the street at my office, same problem, water bill was two, three, four hundred dollars a month. Car wash, six, seven, eight hundred dollars a month. Car wash is on wet water. My house is on, uh, septic, so I don't, I don't have any sewage usage. The only trash usage, usage I have is at the car wash and at my home, um, so, I've been paying fifteen plus hundred dollars a month for a long time. And I would like to say the car wash has just been game-bustered and staying busy, and I'm washing twenty cars a day, but, guys, I'm not. Depending on what bay you pull in, they're four and a half to five and a half gallon per minute tips. If twenty cars was rolling through there a day, averaging sixty, sixty-five gallons, you know, that's maybe twelve hundred gallons a day. But once again, I'm not, I haven't been using city water, but yet my sewage bills and trash bills have been six, seven, eight hundred dollars a month. I was told that the sewage was calculated off of last year's usage as far as water, well, I'm, I, once again, I've never been, it's known, it's known one of those places, I've spent lots and lots of money having plumbing done, check valves, um, I also have a metering system in there that everything that the water sends, everything the town sends in there, when I'm using town water, I'm able to meter what comes in that building. My meter has never, and I'm not saying my meter's accurate, but my meter has never matched the town's meter. And, uh, I've, I've just, I've, I've kinda had enough with it, and I've, I've drilled water wells everywhere, and I've also been told in the past that I couldn't use the water well with car wash, that water well was drilled before that car wash was built. So I have all rights to use that. This past month and a half, I've been using city water to car wash. And my last month's bill, I think it was under four hundred dollars. You know, the first time I've turned my city water on in a year, a year and a half, I go from seven, eight hundred dollars a month for just sewage and trash to, well, I'm using trash, sewage, and water, and it's under four hundred, I just don't understand what the deal is.
Do you know what you were paying for sewage?
I can't remember right off the top of my head, uh, I'd actually spoke with Tiffany and Shelley yesterday, and from what I can see on your commercial rate page, it's just a little under seven cents per gallon. Well, I mean, seven cents a gallon at six or seven, I mean, that's all, that's a lot of gallons, I mean, far.
And the reason I ask, the sewer, people came to the board several years ago and said, hey, I'm, I'm watering my lawn in the summer, and I'm having to pay sewage on that, and it's not going down the sewer system. And the town board at that time, uh, agreed to average the winter months and charge that through the summer months, correct, Shelley?
Correct.
And I'm wondering if you got averaged in when you had a high usage.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just talking several months in a row. It's, it's been like that, I mean, that's the way it was kinda explained to me yesterday when I spoke to them or the day before, and I just, I'm not quite fine or understanding, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know, and I don't know what your readings are, but I do know sewage, if it's, it's average.
If I can average a thousand gallons of water a month, I've, I've done good business, and I don't think that's ever happened, so. That's where I stand with it, I just, I've said what I wanted to say.
And you said you've got a meter in your.
I do have a meter inside my building, right on the wall, as soon as the city water comes in, it meters it, before it goes in any of my holding tanks.
How much discrepancy is there in that?
Easily, uh, when I was, I, I stopped paying attention to it a long time ago, but easily twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred gallons.
That the city meter is reading more than your meter?
Correct.
And yours, I, I'm guessing is a mechanical meter?
Correct.
Well, I think those are things that we need to definitely check in.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I mean, as many issues as we're having, just, is there a way we could put a check meter, you know, on some of these places to where we could put two meters in line and see if they line up? Or is it not really feasible?
Not really.
Okay.
I think you'd have room to.
Well, that's why I wasn't sure if there is a way to do this.
I really think that, and I hope I'm not, I hope I'm not being too optimistic, but I'm really thinking this new system that we just voted to spend two hundred and six thousand dollars on is going to, is going to correct that, and I'm definitely in favor of making a policy that that gets checked every day, or every third day, or whatever, and, and notify the public if you've got it.
Would they be the same meters that are in use, you're not changing meters again?
No, we just replaced the, all those meters, did we not? This is the new meter that we went to
Right.
over the last.
And some of them are still the meters, I think, am I correct?
Yeah.
Pardon?
What did you say?
We are not one hundred percent on the new meter.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
We are now?
We have all of them except for one changed out.
Okay.
I've got one more thing, if I can have the floor for a second.
Sure.
Back when my, my water bill was two, three hundred dollars a month here a few months back, I had made a complaint almost a year and a half ago, one of my guys was mowing my house, and he had mowed over the water meter box, broke the lid, pulled all the wires out of the meter housing. So when I, when I made a complaint about having this issue in this high-water bill, um, and, and was wanting to know how they read the meters, you know, they said they read them digitally, well, there's no way that you can digitally read that meter if the wires have been pulled out of it for over a year. So then I was told that maybe you can thumb-touch it, or something.
You can walk up and scan the top of the meter, and it gives you the same.
Yeah, I, I've, I've got cameras in my house, but I've never seen anybody in my, my driveway checking my meter, not like I, I check that all the time, but I'm just really curious, you know, how we had this big jump, and.
So when does this new equipment get installed?
Well, now that we've accepted the contract, we will, it'll be, um, as soon as we can get them scheduled.
So what if you have more citizens that come and continue to complain, are you guys just gonna say, sorry about your luck? We're getting a new system, we're hopeful that the new system's gonna work?
I mean, I, I'm willing to take suggestions on exactly what.
I think you should do the right thing and credit these citizens back what they deserve.
On this new system, are, are you guys gonna try and do everybody at once, or just the meters that have ran out of date? Like, these digital meters, where they have a life expectancy of, what, five years, ten years?
Twenty years.
Twenty years? So are we just replacing the ones that are out of date?
Sort of, we've already replaced the meters with the electronic ones. This is us building a system to where this data will come into a database here at Town Hall on a, on a daily basis, and I'm not sure exactly how often we will get that, the way I was made to understand this is we will get this data once a day. And so, whenever we're able to get this data, we are gonna be able to trend and see patterns a lot easier than we can if we're only doing this once a day. Basically, I'm not gonna say we're gonna have the meter test, in that, am I right on that, or am I wrong? We're gonna get this a lot more. We're gonna get this a lot more often than what we're getting it currently. So we'll be able to go out and poll these meters and it'll tell us where, where we're at volume wise. So if we start seeing big jumps, it's gonna be a lot easier for us to detect that without people coming in and saying something. Because outside of now, we don't know that until after the, the billing cycle. And then, you know, we're, we're, we're reactive, we're not proactive. And that's the problem, and that's a huge problem. Because if you're not expecting a three hundred dollar bill and you get a three hundred dollar bill, that's the issue. But if we can catch that on day one, we eliminate this issue completely, so, I mean.
The problem is the result of the reaction. So you guys say that you're reactive, well, you're reactive, but you're, there's no action behind it. Which is like, well, we ran a, a field meter test and, or a field test and it showed that it went through and that's, you go to plumbing league, I mean, there's no, there's no, that is the same answer to everybody. It's just, it's repetitive and there's no, there's no citizen.
How do we be fair about that? And I'm.
They have proof and you just reimburse them to the way it has been. And they have, all of them have proof and you guys are just ignoring it. And you just keep saying, sorry about your luck, I didn't help you. I mean, this woman has got a plumber for a husband.
I understand.
Okay, how come you can't go, you, how come you, you stand behind, pay it or it gets shut, it gets shut off? How come you cannot reimburse her for that? When it was a vacant house, no one was there.
I understand. And my issue personally is, and Shelley, if you would go ahead and put this on the agenda for next month, for us to develop a policy to cover that. Because I don't feel comfortable as a board member saying we're reimbursing you five hundred, you two hundred, and you thirty. I just, I think we've gotta come up with a fair system. And I've been down this road before and the town used to adjust water bills way more frequently than now.
So what changed?
People coming in and everybody, I didn't use that much water. I didn't use that much water. And I, I know, and I, I, I understand where you're coming from.
The accountability of these meters not working. And when the manufacturer comes in here and gives a report, maybe the board should say, sorry, you know, we found the citizens, we did not act on this sooner. Let's make this right for the citizens.
Well, that's why I do want the manufacturer coming in. And I do want them to answer to these questions because we put our faith in them as far as the accuracy of their meter and did they sell us snake oil? You know, what, what, what is it about our meters specifically that we're having all these issues? And what is your solution to solve this problem? Because you came to us and convinced us to purchase these meters because of your accuracy. Now, you've gotta stand behind that. And so what does that look like and how do we make this right? So that's, that's what I want them to answer. And then I feel like that gives us a better route to go as far as for the citizens and you guys holding us accountable. So I, I completely agree, but I also, I would agree that us giving, you know, two or three refunds right now isn't a solution to the problem. We're putting a Band-Aid over it. And so let us go and do some research and then let's figure out a policy to fix this every time rather than right now.
I would like to see you guys ask the meter companies if water pressure fluctuations in the water line pressure, could that be generating the way it's reading the meter?
It should be reading that, that's, without the pressure, it's not going to be able to measure that.
So if it's got five pounds of pressure or thirty pounds of pressure, it doesn't affect the reading?
It does affect the reading, but it should do that calculation inside of the electronics.
Okay, 'cause I'm, you know.
It should compensate for that.
Water pressure fluctuations.
Well, and that's gonna be anyway.
That's a good question.
That is a great question. I never even thought about that, but yeah.
But I, I will tell you that when that was going on at the four oh nine center, I had lots of air in my water.
Okay.
Lots of air.
I have a.
That's a good question. I haven't even, I hadn't even thought about that. Like when we go down for, you know, maintenance or something like that, we have to. We get a lot of air, I'm sure everyone else does, I do in the morning, I can always tell when it's been down over the, over the evening. So I don't want you guys to think that we don't care about your concerns. I do take these very seriously, I do wanna find solutions to these problems. And we're not having these conversations in, over the next year, so I.
Will the citizens get a copy or be able to see the new system that was approved tonight?
Sure. I, I, you mean a copy of this, the contract? I don't, I think it's all public record, I believe. So yeah, that, that won't be an issue.
Here's what I'd recommend. Alyssa, what if we, what if we do this? We have Alyssa get ahold of the meter representative and get him scheduled. Once we get him scheduled, we will put a notice out in the media that yes, he's gonna be here on such and such time. And I would like to see every one of you come back.
Absolutely.
And because you've got questions, you brought up the question about the air, that's a good question. I can't answer that question, but hopefully he can, better.
That's what I was feeling about the water pressures.
Exactly.
Reload the line, there is a lot of.
Sure.
And also we will discuss, Shelley's gonna put it on the agenda to discuss a, a policy concerning this. Because I think to be legal, we've got to, I don't think we can just refund without having some kind of policy.
Well, you also have to go with the state statute.
Absolutely.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna say is, you know, we need, where all of us can have a copy of the state statute with the, to make that policy, right?
Yes. And we need to be Jared involved.
Randy, I don't, I don't know what the rest of the board's thoughts are, but this may be something we would want to devote a special meeting to, to.
Yep.
Have the attorney here to go over that with us and, and make, and helping us, give us guidelines to make that policy.
That's where I'm at, as a board member, you know, when people call you and you got complaints, they've been to the office already. They didn't get what they wanted out of the office, so that, you know, they contacted board members. I've actually had fifty people call me and, and talked about water meters, get kicked on at one o'clock in the morning, you know? And, you know, and I already go the other route. My sister called me, she had a three or four hundred dollar water bill. And then following month, she had a six hundred dollar water bill. You know, so I told her, go get her meter checked. But also at the same time you do this, 'cause she's in with a chair, you know, her husband ain't able to climb underneath the, the house. They had a water leak when they, they had the plumber there. So there is two sides of that. But she got her water bill, her, her pipes fixed, so her, her bill did go back to normal. So there is two sides of it, of it, you know, so, you know, I just think that we need to get our policy in order with our state statutes and, and, and make it right. You know, and if we can change some of the way we address the issues in, in the office, you know? It should be maybe one of them deals where Alyssa's the first one to get ahold of and, and go. You know, 'cause we can't do nothing, not let you guys come to us and change, you know, it's plain and simple.
And it's made that way for a reason.
Yeah.
Like I said earlier, we don't want a town employee willy-nilly dropping water bills. And a town board member can't do that on their own, but us in a meeting can, so.
With that said, Bert, I'm, I'm sorry for buttoning in on you. I'll just go ahead and recommend that we table my agenda item for tonight. I know you, you mentioned just a minute ago that you wanted a, a different agenda item. I would like to leave this one on also.
Sure.
Okay. Why, absolutely.
And.
'Cause they go hand in hand.
Yeah.
David, he's actually talking about also having a special meeting.
Yeah.
Say it again.
He was talking about having a special meeting?
If, if the meter guy can come and that way.
I would, I would agree with that.
That way everybody can come back and not have to sit through the other meeting and.
And, and if we do call a special meeting, I, I would like to have my agenda item on there.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a question. I, I just wanna be sure I'm straight going forward. So we're replacing the water meters right now, is that correct?
We've got all of the. Yeah, we've got all the meters replaced. This is the antenna that's gonna be on top.
Okay, so, so the meters are, are the same company that, that we replaced? So we really haven't changed anything there except for the way they read, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it'd just be the new software and the new antenna.
And the system that we've ordered on tonight to, to approve that, how long will it be before that's in place?
I mean, it just really depends on the lead times to get all the equipment in.
Okay, so we've gotta wait for equipment then, okay.
And that's been contractor installed, correct?
No, no, we, well, the, the antenna on top of the tower and the software, and as far as the MXUs themselves, we'll install those.
'Cause that's just attaching to the meter.
So if there is a problem with meters, is this gonna fix it?
It's just gonna let us know.
It's gonna give us. It's gonna give us more data earlier rather than us seeing it once a month when they're red and us preparing bills. We'll know ahead of time because we're gonna see more data on a daily basis, which hopefully goes into a system. And if it sees a variance over a certain percentage, which I'm sure we can probably set, or I hope at least has that capability. It'll flag that for us to say, this is a list of the problem meters that we can, we can kind of look at and, and try to prevent these large issues or a water leak, if they do end up with a water leak.
How many meters are there in the Tennessee water system?
Eleven hundred roughly.
Eleven hundred, okay.
But also thing, an important thing too, also have is a correct phone number or an email within City Hall. If I notice your water leaking, I call the number that's updated and you didn't get that phone call or email or, you know, or whatever, you know?
So Harold, we did order, they're being made now, door knockers also. So if they do, we do find a leak and the phone numbers that we have don't work, they can leave a door knocker also. It's in the process of being made right now.
Great.
I'm gonna say that my, my cousin, we addressed this and she, she lives in Dewey, Oklahoma. And she, she has a pool. And she said that they have a system, this same system in place, I don't know if it's the same meter, but she said they had that same monitoring system in place. She says, I'll get up, she goes, I actually called the city office to let them know, hey, I'm getting ready to fill up my pool. So I am gonna be using more water, 'cause she said if I don't, I will get a call the next day that said, hey, you've got, you've got, you've used so many gallons of water, blah, blah, blah. And so it, she said it works really nice.
Well, hopefully we can get on that same page.
Because to me, I mean, that also goes back to the sewer. You know, you have this back and you ought, you ought to go back to kind of the old, not the old way, but where we don't have to average our sewer bills every year.
Well, the reason that was done, Harold, is if people water their lawn, it's not fair to charge a sewer because it's not going into the sewer system. And that would, but yeah, on a leak, they shouldn't, if it is.
But we also did it for the swimming pool.
And I wouldn't have any problem if there's a leak and it didn't go in the sewer system, take it off the sewer bill.
Like me personally.
Or swimming pool.
My sewer bill is higher than my water bill every month.
Mine is too.
And how is it when, you know, I only put so much water in there, so how can they charge more for sewer?
Can the sewer be looked at? 'Cause honestly, I don't think he got an answer about his sewer. And I feel like you guys should scrape to, just brush underneath the rug. And I don't think averaging is the correct way today in 2025. Surely there's a better way.
Well, with, with his, I'm not entirely sure. I've got more questions than I've got answers on his because he said he hasn't used city water in a year and a half. So I'm not entirely sure what calculation was even being used. So I've got more questions than, so it's hard, hard for me to answer that until I can do some more research to figure out.
Even if it is calculated off the water usage, you know, a, a power washer and the Oklahoma wind, you're gonna lose more than half of that water to the wind than it's actually gonna go down every day.
Yeah.
Okay, if I get the issue, I'd like to actually see the bills, see what.
Yeah, to try to figure out what, or find out how they calculated your, your sewage. Because if you're not using water, but that's what we base our calculation on, then how did we come to this? Did they go back several years to where it was on city water, maybe even before you owned it? I don't know.
It's never been on city water.
Oh, it hasn't, okay.
Chris, Chris Murray didn't have it on city water. The gentleman before that didn't have it on city water.
Okay.
I, I know at one point they supplemented, one of the owners supplemented, some was town water and some was water.
And I've tried doing that as well, it just doesn't.
Actually, I've got a.
Other towns to see how they do their sewer.
And they're doing that. They, they are gathering information from other communities.
Physician?
Absolutely.
I mean, how, how does, how does one explain when he uses his own water well and his, his sewer bill is seven hundred dollars, that he goes, flips over to town water and uses four hundred dollars in, to town water, that his sewer bill is much less? How do you, how do you explain that? I mean, because if he's a car washer and you're just averaging it, you should be averaging every month. So how, does he have a seven hundred dollar bill this month, but because, because he used his own water in his well, not city water, but then he uses city water and he has a much less sewer bill?
I don't know.
I don't have an answer for that. Yeah, I don't, I'd have to. I'm gonna have to do some more research and figure out. Now, I'm not entirely sure when they, when did they do the reaveraging?
It's October through February, I believe.
Okay.
Just that reaver.
So when is that?
And then it comes out in July.
Okay.
And it goes from July to July.
So it would be, that would be why is because your, your calculation just changed for July? So that's, that's why your water bill went down, is your sewer more than likely is what went down?
Who does the reaveraging? Tiffany.
Tiffany does. It's all, I, I believe she's got it.
Do you all have any say in that or do you all have any?
We talked about it last year, we went over it and we adjusted water rates and sewage rates last, I'm not entirely sure as of March, yes.
That's what she asked. I think she's asking, do we have any say in what that average is?
Yes.
No. No, we don't.
Why not? So, I mean, why not? I mean, so you're, there again.
Because we're consistent across the board with everyone.
Where you have one person that does everything, that has all the say.
Well, she's not, she's going off the numbers from the averages. She's not, she's not just pulling these numbers out to say this person's average is this and this is the other. I'm assuming, and this is a big assumption, that it's made either through an Excel spreadsheet or she has some sort of.
I'm pretty sure that's what it is, is a spreadsheet.
It's a spreadsheet that's doing these calculations for, for her and she plugs them in.
Making it up.
Then there could be an error.
There one, there absolutely could be.
Which is very easy to.
Which is, which is all of this. You know, a lot of this is, is input various ways. I mean, there's, there's lots of room for error.
There's gotta be a better way. I mean, there's gotta be a system out there or something.
Ashley, you said you didn't, you didn't like the averaging on the sewer. What, what?
Because she's, look, she's had how many high water bills and so now we're gonna average it? That's not fair to her.
No, and I agree.
So I, I think it needs to be done a different way, especially on higher.
Should be taken off the sewer, for sure.
No, yeah, that should be adjusted. I hope it is, if it's not, we will be going to do that.
But the average.
System, I think everybody needs to be reaveraged or start like, I don't know, start at base level for everybody. Then you will see if the system truly is working. Hopefully it is, who knows?
But, and I, and I'm not trying to argue with you 'cause I want input. What, what would be a better system through the summer months when people are watering?
I don't know, Bert, I'd have to think about it and get back with you. I wasn't planning on.
Because, I know, no, I understand and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but, 'cause it used to be the sewer was charged on the amount of water. And then people came in and said, hey, that's not fair because I'm, ninety percent of my water bills go on my lawn and not down the sewer. So we said, okay, well, average your winter months when you're not watering your lawn and that's the sewer bill you'll pay in the summer.
Well, then what about, like Harold said, he said his sewer bill is higher than his water bill now?
Mine is two, at, at my office.
Do you not wonder why?
Well, I know part of the reason why is that the DEQ made us build all those new lagoons and required us to get alone to do that to raise the sewer rates. And that was Department of Environmental Quality.
So the sewer rates are higher than the water rates?
In some instances, they are. In some instances, they are.
Well.
Mine at the funeral home, I don't use that much water, but the base sewer rate's more than the base water rate.
Is that because you're commercial?
Uh-huh.
Okay, he's residential. So why is his sewer bill higher than his water bill?
I'll tell you mine, for instance. My kid, my daughter and my grandkids lived with me last year during all this. Therefore, we used a lot more water the year before. So once they have moved out, my water has went down, my sewer.
But you're still paying the average sewer. That's probably why.
So.
Here's where I'll tell you. I've lived in my house now for the most four and a half years. My sewer bill has always been higher than my water bill. And, and only one time out of four years has mine been over eighty bucks. Rest of the time, you know, I have one water bill, three hundred bucks. And, you know, and I'm gonna say that I got, I left my water sprinkler, sprinklers on my lawn that month. I don't know why it was high that month, you know? I do have a wife. I know behind her. She leaves something running and the reason she left it running, so she's the boss. So, you know, so one time out of, you know, four and a half years, you know, the rest of the time it's averaged the same. I can almost, you know, sixty-nine to seventy-five, you know, bucks every month, you know? And my sewer has always been higher. So, I don't know how they do the averages, you know, I don't, you know? I'd have to see the spreadsheet to me just to, you know, show me why it's higher, just, you know? You know, and a lot of that would, uh, if, if we could be more, maybe even put that on our webpage where people could see it themselves, you know? And, and see why that, you know?
What I think.
Like my, here's my opinion. A person can afford to water the yard, they can afford to pay the water, sprinkler system or whatever. Hell, he didn't even say nothing. He put a new sprinkler, sprinklers in there.
So, wish, so the sewer is not calculated by a multiplier on your water, or is it?
It is.
Okay, okay.
But in the summer, it's calculated on your winter water usage. So if you water the lawn, you're not having to pay sewer on that.
What's the, it's October to what? February.
February.
Maybe I'll look at November, October. You can still be hot, you know, watering your yard. Maybe look at November through March. It's always cold still in March.
Not me. November, I'm tired of mowing, so.
There's that.
See, I mean, maybe we need to readjust the months and.
It's something we can look into. But definitely have Tiffany come in and show us how she does those calculations as well. I mean, gee, I, I'm, I'm all about being as transparent as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Well, and I think probably it would be good, maybe she can put the, the sheet she uses up on the big screen, uh, where everybody can see it, and she can tell us how she's doing that. But I think also what, what will help is, uh, getting the, getting the policies from surrounding communities and finding out how you do your sewer averaging. How do you do your high water bills and that sort of thing? So to help us develop a policy, cuz that's all our board is forced to, to make policy and.
I think you'd have happy citizens if you did that, Bert.
I just suggest you don't go, you don't call Watonga.
Watonga?
Yeah. You not heard all their issues?
No.
Well, they just fired their town administrator, so, because of issues.
On the special.
Maybe similar, and, and plus more.
I have one more question that I'll put out. The special meeting, will it be like on a Tuesday after the board meeting or will it be on another night?
It'll more than likely be on another night, but we'll announce that as soon as we can get everything coordinated.
And will you try to like accommodate most citizens if possible?
It'll, it'll be, I'm sure it'll be in the evening like we try to do, so.
Thank you.
Are you thinking we need to move it to a bigger venue?
Uh, yeah. I think more people will come after Washington Eye for sure. I've been getting text messages, so I think people will come.
Okay. We can, we can definitely try to come.
So if not married many people come, don't come yell at me. I'm just saying.
Bart?
Tell them, we'll tell them you're making cupcakes.
That they won't come.
Go ahead.
A few years ago, one of the meetings, Tiffany made the comment that all she has to do is to go to her computer and she can click and see how much water is going through my house or anybody's house. Do you remember this, Bert? I think it's been that long ago you were.
No, the only thing I know is the field test.
So I'm just wondering if we're using the same product? I mean, is that, is she able to do that now? Can she go in and look and see how, if the water?
No, I mean, just for the water meters, it's just a field test.
Okay.
I think that was a field test.
Switched to the water meters then? I mean, we've switched to a different program, but.
What we voted on tonight will have that capability.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I just remembered her saying that and I thought how strange, cuz she's like, yeah, I know every time you flush the toilet. And I'm like, oh, God.
With a field test.
Well, I just flushed the toilet in there just a minute ago.
Alyssa, how much? How much data does the meter store? Does it only do thirty days?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five days?
We're working on trying to get it back a little farther, but I think with that new software, it goes back quite a while. Don't quote me on the exact days, but it's, it's.
Well, that's something for the, the technician or the representative to answer for us. So, okay.
Real quick, before we get off of the water, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Have you put one of those on my water meter out there? It's out, um, Adam Street sixty, seventy-four. You're the one.
No, I think so, but.
You're supposed to remember all that.
I know.
Eleven hundred meters, you need to.
I remember that. I, I believe so.
I didn't see one. But that's the other part of it. We don't know how to shut our water off because everything is buried? Would it be possible for y'all to go out and dig out?
I mean, technically, whenever you guys need it shut off, we have to be the ones.
Technically, if, if you was there twenty-four, seven, I'd love for you to come out and do it. I wouldn't have to listen to you.
Or a five hundred dollar water bill.
We've had it to where we've dug them out and we go back the next month, it's filled back up from the gophers. Some of them don't, some of them do. I mean, it's just, it really depends.
Well, if you have a water emergency at your house and you need to shut it off, we have no way of doing that.
You don't have a valve on your side of the meter?
Uh, we don't either.
Well, I do, but it doesn't shut all the way.
I'm just giving you a bet.
I don't know. I just hear him complain all the time about not being able to shut the water off. That seems like a big deal.
We, we have someone on call, you know, twenty-four hours to.
If you need to work on your faucet, you can't shut the water off. And I don't even know what you want to dig out.
So who do, who do they call?
After hours call four, 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 four. And then.
Is that the police station?
It goes to dispatch.
Emergency.
Yeah, I thought that was a lawyer's office, commercial.
I think it actually is.
It is. It is.
It's the number one lawyer for the membership business.
Right. Are we ready to move on?
Well, I got one more question, and, and this is for you, Randy.
Sure.
I just talked to you guys about, I wanted to leave this on, this agenda item on for the, uh, our, our next, uh, uh, special meeting and/or our next monthly meeting, whichever comes first.
Sure.
But, uh, I think I might wanna put a vote on there, so I need to change the wording. Jared and Tiffany are not here tonight for me to ask, so I'll take the liberty of changing the wording the way I want it and then see if it gets through the review process.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, cuz I'm not sure the answer to that question either, so. Okay. I don't wanna skip over anybody. Everybody, we good? Okay. Well, we're gonna go to citizens comments, so. Say, feel free. I think Tyson had something to say, but had other things to do. Yeah. Okay, uh, number five, new business. Any matter not known or which could have been, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda according to section three eleven dash nine, title twenty-five OS.
Okay, I got one for that.
Okay.
So it was found, and I think she's gonna include this more in her report, she knows a little bit more. But we have a loan that's still in construction status. We got around six hundred thousand dollars in there with a low interest rate. We're needing to use it up, I believe, within a year. And they like it to be on, uh, you know, a water project. So we were talking and seeing what you guys would think about replacing the other old skid, the Oreo skid at the water plant. So then we'd have two new ones.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Something to consider.
Can we see that money in, in the treasures report?
That's ARPA money, isn't it?
Don't get me to lie.
I think that's ARPA money.
ARPA money? Okay.
It's not in here then.
I think it's getting a little bit closer to transaction between the land and the city and the county, maybe?
I hope so. It feel like it's been dragging on for about six months now.
Yes, sir.
Jared, I, I talked to Jared yesterday, an email was sent to him. I think, uh, waiting on Porterfield to get out there to do the survey. And then, of course, Mike's been gone, uh, vacation and, you know, stuff. So hopefully they, he thought he might have done in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, number six, councilperson's report. Harold?
Yeah, I just got, uh, I wanna thank all the citizens for showing up here today and bringing a lot of this stuff to us, you know? You know, uh, I know some of you guys, you know, think that we're not for you guys, but we are, you know? We got policies in place, you know, to, cuz, you know, if my dear mother had a high water bill, I, you know, I could say, yeah, I'll, I'll take it away. So we, we do have to go through procedures, the correct procedures to do it right, you know? Like I said, uh, you know, so we do like to hear your guys' concerns and stuff like that, you know? And sometimes it's the best way, there's more people out there that won't step up or don't wanna be heard. And I'm glad you guys did show up and, and, and did, you know, did show up tonight. The other part, I, I wanna thank you, uh, our water department to take care of the issue at the radio ring, so.
Bert?
Ditto. I, I, I always think it's great when we have citizen input, even though, uh, a lot of times people don't come unless you got a problem. And we understand that, but it's, it's always good to have people here, people concerned. So thanks. Appreciate you all coming.
John?
Yeah, I'll say it too. Appreciate you coming and bringing all this to our attention.
Dave?
Thanks, everybody. That's all I got, Randy.
Okay. And I'll, I thank you as well. Um, and hopefully we can do something in the next meeting and really get some answers to some of these questions. And, uh, I'm all for being as transparent as possible. And, uh, we can develop some new policy to make sure that these aren't problems we're talking about this time next year. So thank you guys for coming. So, um, all right, with that, uh, move to adjourn. Make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold? John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.